All right, well, call me to order everybody who's currently present in the room, the entire board, Matt Scott and I, and we'll start with pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, which is same one nation. And this is what we're taking justice for all.
Thank you.
You know, we're not, thanks for coming in. I don't mean that unnecessary meeting, certainly, I don't think the meeting is going to be particularly long. But I know that the Estuary wants to apply for a community development block grant. And so they needed these policies passed by the town. So. Anyway. Let's see, Nits. Is there any, if there's a member from the public who would like to comment? You may do so.
I think she's just here because we have a library on the.
Yeah, oh, right, right, right.
Thank you, Matt, that's why I'm here.
Nancy, speak for yourself.
I will.
So I did talk to Amanda yesterday, just to might as well just cover that down. Obviously, I think there is a meeting tonight or last night, or was, but Amanda's gonna have more information on this. She said, I'd prefer to do it next time because I might be able to fill you in better on. So we're just gonna table that today. I did read yesterday about that. There's no urgency to it anyway.
No.
The feasibility study is done. You know, how and when, if it gets funded, is a whole different issue. So there's certainly no urgency to that. Other than closing out the grant. That's the thing, we at some point, if the feasibility study is done, we have to close out the grant, just so we're buttoned up on that. I have Jennifer Donahue following up with Amanda on that. So that we know where we are, there were gonna be in kind. So the town had to make a contribution and Amanda and Jennifer were gonna do in kind services. Amanda and Susan were gonna do in kind services by billing their time. I assume that's done, my understanding was there was gonna be no issue with them meeting that obligation, so. Why don't we go around the horn here, very exciting day today, Scott?
That's right. So I'm trying to share my screen, I gotta get to it and see if I can do that.
Amazing, I mean, like, have you looked at the field?
I saw it on Friday afternoon, but I didn't drive by yesterday.
Well, today, so if I'm allowed to share tonight, there it is. Okay. That is. We're gonna whip them from the top and we're gonna show, do a show and tell a show, everyone, what's going on, all right, so. After all that long period, we've got the conduit in and the poles arrived. And now you can see some of the process, those are the lights. Those are all of our in, our people in town who are working diligently to make this happen.
Uh, yeah, one snafu, Tom McWhitty called me yesterday and said. The guy who's putting in the concrete, I don't have a permit for that. You have a permit for the electrical, but not for that, so. I just said, Tom, he needed. He needed the contractor's license information and he needed the specs. I got that this morning, it's already been sent to Tom. So from Mike Mahoney at Muscat. So that should be all set.
All right. There's kind of, wow, you can see the first ball in. Yes, that process of how they do it.
So the amazing thing about that.
Sixteen feet deep.
And didn't hit water. I mean, we're in the dry season. But I talked, Julie was in my office last week. And Julie said they're gonna hit water at ten, twelve feet and I, we asked Jim Benoli what he thought based on all the monitoring wells out there. That's what he said. But they never hit water, which is good.
So that's it, so that's it, very exciting, this is, things are coming together, we still have a bunch of balls in the air that we, you know, everything must come together at the same time for this to work. But it looks very, very promising for a fall.
But not only that, it looks like, like, like you're gonna see the actual light towers up this week.
Yeah, we will.
Yeah.
I think you will, all you need now is electricity, which is sound and that's.
That's different.
That's three weeks.
But, yeah, I mean, the actual towers are gonna be up. Which is pretty exciting, Larry Bonin came in yesterday, that's the hard part, it's done.
To watch those people put those mats there, thousand pound mats, they had nine trucks come in with these black mats that are like twenty by twelve. And they're like Lego sets, so, and so this guy took this machine, lifted them up over the ticket booth and down, right? And he put it down on the ground, then he went back down below, he put it in front of that one and it interlocked. And then the next side, and he worked out the whole field and he flipped those things with it all by himself, putting those mats together.
Did you want to have public comment, though?
Okay, I'm sorry.
So that was unbelievable, the skill involved in that machine and then the challenge of doing that. And he said our field was easy, so that was an important and necessary piece to preserve the integrity of that field.
It'll be amazing to see those up.
Scott, where, I know there was, you know, the, you saw bricks.
Yes.
With, for the fundraising part, so where will the bricks go in relation to that?
We have all kinds of options involved, that's our next project, once the lights are lit. Then we're gonna finalize that, but there is, you know, there's a chance it's on a walkway going right in, it's right now paved. And or we may re-engineer. Right next to the tennis court and then it turns to the field and possibly put the bricks underneath the seating area. So they'd be in like on the back of where someone might see, that they'll be very well disfigured, it'd be very, we're calling it monument way. And we were looking into the future about all kinds of different things.
And cool.
Oh, yes.
What?
Two hundred bricks we sold.
And are you, where are those in getting them made and?
Well, until we begin that project, we weren't, we're not doing that, so. The polar grain, once we've ordered them, they'll arrive in three to six weeks and then we have to store them someplace, but, so. I think that project is not as early until after the first season of November.
All right.
It's a weather issue.
Yeah, and then you're gonna have to obviously work with the school as to where they want it.
So we've been working with that.
Yeah. That's all together. I'm sure they're very specific in how they want it.
They have a facilities committee that's been briefed.
They're on board. And then. You know, Tom McWhitty and Pete Torrenzi may wanna, you know, make sure things, yeah, you know, I know Julie knows all that. Julie has been, I know, so Julie coordinated a lot of this and, I mean, I've been involved, but Julie coordinated. You know, I was thinking this morning before the meeting, the amount of. People involved in this is staggering, I mean, and, you know, Julie has been on it, I mean, I give Julie a lot of credit. Obviously, the fundraising piece, all the people on the fundraising piece, I know you, Chris Costa was just. Unbelievably helpful with all this. You know, Musco Sports Lighting was, you know, came to multiple meetings, entered and paid, you know, so, but. You know, there were, and Larry Bonin's been very involved with this, Jim Benoli's been involved to some extent, but Larry's been very involved. It, you know, and then there's just the coordination of the mats and, you know.
All those people at the same time.
By the way, we're renting these mats for two weeks, they're expensive. But verifying, because we have this window. The lights better, you know, we, who knows with the world the way it is today. I said to Julie, are you sure the lights are gonna show, and she goes, she was making sure that Mike from Musco was like, they are gonna show. And they did. Which, that's what I was concerned about.
Just to go along with that, I have to jump in because that's, I'm one of those people who says, just do it. Like in February, when we talked about the lights, she indicated to us, there's gonna be a lot of steps in this, we have to coordinate with the mat material for this and everything, just like.
And frontier.
Yeah, yeah, just do it, but then as you get closer, you are absolutely, I mean, it took, for all of us to watch all of those things come together. And her to have coordinated all that is tremendous.
Remarkable amount of coordination.
And then we needed Larry and Jim and you and everybody else that's involved in that, and so it's, it is a community project, it's a great project. And I appreciate all of the partnerships that have been going on, so.
Yeah, no, it's been. Pretty amazing to get here and we're here, which is, there's a good reason to have a meeting, if nothing else. Matt?
I don't wanna hold things up, I, just some questions and Scott's pictures and that hitting waters, you know, one of the pieces. So when will we have another update on the testing that has gone on?
Testing, I'm sorry, say testing.
The testing out on the high school site, in terms of as we're looking at our.
That is fully complete.
We don't have to get into it now, it's more, you know, are we gonna have a chance to?
So, no, so. We had a meeting with, okay, so this, this is where we are. We stopped testing, we've had, we tested for a year, we stopped testing, they had to. There was a lot of work to be done to like finalize it and put it into a report, and that report was submitted to DEP. Two, three weeks ago, we had a meeting, we had a meeting with our engineer and. Couple members of the WPCA and me and Jim Benoli and like seven people from DEP. There, there are a couple hurdles, one of them is. The amount of assumed water flow from each house per day. There are some regulations, I want to say, at deep. That when you have this type of system, not one, not a sewer that goes into a class B waterway or something, right? Like the Connecticut River. But when you have an in-ground system, they build in more conservatism to it. Because obviously, they don't want it to fail, and they build it into the tune of like four hundred gallons per day. When all the statistical evidence shows that it's like eighty gallons a day. So we're trying to get them to compromise at one eighty to two hundred a day, which be like incredibly sufficient. They were receptive to that, and there's a DPH guideline, not a DEP guideline, that says that's okay. All right, so that's hurdle number one. And. That's probably the biggest right now, that, they have to basically accept that they think we can do this. Before we, so they're talking about, you know, what are you, you know, public, you know, what are you, I'm like, I'm not doing anything until you say that. We might be able to do this and even try to do it, I don't even know, the community may not accept it. And we'll go from there, if that's the case. So. Anyway, so. I, you can eat, I can, I'm happy to share that with you, that information, the information, by the way. Is very solid, so I said to the engineer, you have this information. It is based on water flow, you know, and you have an estimate as to what you, oh, the other hurdle is. Doing a full-scale test, which install, which basically, I think I said.
Is basically installing the system.
Right, so we asked them if we could do a modified test. Um, one that's much on a smaller scale. And they were somewhat receptive to that, so those are the two areas.
They'll basically go back now and deliberate within DEP.
That's exactly what happened.
And.
God knows when that might happen. Yeah, so. I don't know, and the optimum, optimum time to do a test is in the spring. Obviously, spring is baseball, cross and all those, so a smaller test would be number one, much better. A later test would be much better, or an earlier test, you know, March would be great. You know, November would be great. We'll see, we'll see what they can, those are the two hurdles, so we are waiting to hear back from them, Matt? Who knows whether we'll hear back from them in one month or five months, I don't know. And, but we've given them a ridiculous amount of information based on all the work we've done, we are in a holding pattern right now.
Okay.
The, so, just to give you an idea of the way it works, so I forget how many test monitoring wells are in the school. They are basically on the baseball field and on the other field, they have nothing to do with parking lots or turf fields, synthetic turf fields, they're in the grass areas. What it demonstrates is how much water, like over here, you might only be able to put in so much water a day, but over here, you can put in a lot more. So it's quite a science. What I said to the engineers, when you have this in a calculation, what are the chances it actually works in real time? You know? And he said like ninety-five percent, which is high probability, here's still five percent, you know, so. But that's why you do a test. A full-scale test could be a two million dollar proposition. Obviously, a more modified one would be much more doable.
Thank you for the update, it'd be great to see the report.
You don't wanna see this. You're more than, I tell you what, you're more than welcome to see it, if you wanna see it, I'll make an appointment for you.
Awesome.
Three hundred, you know, it's very highly technical.
And then, what was my other question about, oh, my other question was just in terms of, so the ARPA. Grant program is open and that information has been distributed by the town officially?
The, everything's out.
Press release and everything's out, okay. Great. That's all I have.
Yeah, so, okay, let me make comments, obviously, the lights. We are going to have, probably at our next meeting, I'll do a town meeting, call the town meeting. I'm kinda hoping to get the Board of Finance to buy in on ratification, I talked to town council about this. Ratification of the prior awards that were given originally, as well as the new awards done, recommended by the committee. Okay, so what we would do is put that all in a town meeting, go to town meeting, that would also be the EV charger. And get that done probably in August, and so next Board of Finance meeting is, it's Tuesday. Ask for appropriation on that, and then we'll meet in two weeks. We'll do. What we need to do and do a call and then we'll have a town meeting at some point, that's the concept of it, okay? All right. So. Obviously, we have a lot of new people in here and it's not me if I talked about this last time, I don't know that I did or not, but we, we are now, we've had meetings now, well, I know we've had meetings in the last, since we last met. With QDS, QDS does all the tax bills. So we send them a file, QDS, and they send the tax bills. And we've had a meeting with Vision, Vision is the software that the assessor uses. These are both very powerful systems. And they, so just, just so you know, Vision and QDS are competitors, okay? So we think of Vision as an, that's what assessors use, they have the majority of the towns in Connecticut as their clients. As an assessment software. Very powerful, good software, they're also doing our rebal for October one of twenty-three. QDS also does assessment software, they have about fifty towns, so they have a significant block of towns. They also do the tax admin. You know, the point is to better integrate all our offices, okay, so, right now, we have Municity in the building office. So everything goes through the assessor, so you get a permit, Scott Giedrich does an addition to his house, Tom McWhitty inspects it, you can now live in it. That permit and all goes to the assessor, the assessor enters it, values it, your next tax bill goes out. Okay, so we're, Municity. Got purchased, we did Municity about five years ago, Municity is the building permit system, it's been very good, Tom. Don Lucas, I think, started it, but Don loves, Tom loves it. Everything's on his laptop, so he goes out, he can take pictures, uploads, it's very good. However, they got balled. And. Forget, we're in the, you can't get ahold of anybody for service, so we may switch. We may switch to either a Vision or a QDS-based system, so that it better integrates with what we're doing. The great thing is, we have new building admin, temporary, right now, but we'll see what happens. Uh, because we have an employee out on FM LA. But we have a real fast learning person up there, and we have all new people in the tax office. We were a little bit siloed before, just because of the people, quite honestly. We are not gonna do that anymore, so. Vision is meeting with, Vision, our assessment software, they are having weekly, Friday weekly meetings with our people in the assessment office. To, number one, have them better use the tool that they have, the software that we purchased. We had a meeting with QDS, they have a whole suite of products, it's almost overwhelming. They're recommending a particular permitting software, we just have to get everybody in a row, we're gonna make sure it works the best, that's the idea. So, just so you know, that's what we're doing internally, we're working towards better integration, more efficient use of time, more efficient use of money. There are so many different softwares, I mean, Sarah uses a COTS, C-O-T-T-S system. Which is like a hundred in every town in Connecticut, I called the COTS guy, he's like, no, there's really no better way for us to integrate for you. This is what we do, I said, fine, I just needed to know. But, you know, we have Municity, we have Vision, we have QDS, you know, Pete uses a Code Pal for the fire marshal. We just wanna make sure that we're talking to each other and that we're as well-integrated as we can be, and so we're, we're doing. We're doing meetings on that, bi-weekly meetings, Lee and I are steering on that. MIRA is closing this month, Trash Energy Plant is closing this month. I am meeting with Janice Elamire over at the COG on Thursday, I'm the treasurer of the COG, so I go over there every two weeks and I have to sign their checks. So I usually go over there around noon, so I'm gonna go over there about eleven, I'm gonna speak with Janice Elamire, Sam Gold, few other folks about. If MIRA no longer exists. What are the towns in our neck of the woods gonna do? Mark Daly is the chief financial officer of MIRA right now, he's, he's terrific, he's, the work he's done. It's hard to explain and I won't, but he's done a lot on the RFPs to get where we are, even though MIRA's only twenty-one towns now. He did an amazing job leading up to all these people leaving, he didn't, we didn't know all these towns were gonna leave, in any event. I'm gonna call Mark up there, because what MIRA has done is for the Essex transfer station, we have CWPM. Which is a trucking company essentially, but they also own a landfill. They are taking the garbage from the Essex transfer station, so we have no difference in how we operate here. We take it to Essex transfer station, CWPM either takes it to the Preston Waste to Energy Plant, if there's availability, capacity for them to take it. Or they vary it, that's what they're doing, at one eleven a ton. That is a subsidized rate, MIRA has subsidized its tonnage for every town that's ever been in MIRA for thirty years. It's part of their charge, if they have surplus funds. They are to either return those funds to the town or offset tip fees, that's in their charge. So I'm, I'm kinda framing the issue for you, there's, I have a MIRA Board of Directors meeting tomorrow, and there is tension. Between some of the towns that have left MIRA that still remain on the Board of Directors. The towns that remain in MIRA being subsidized, Hartford wants to reclaim that property where South Meadows Plant is, it's on the river. They are telling MIRA, do not spend as much of your reserves on subsidizing tip fees, because you're gonna have to clean up that property. MIRA doesn't have to clean up that property. Uh, it's very clear what MIRA has to do with that property, that, that plant was a. Like a coal plant or something, I mean, it, MIRA took it over and made it a trash shifter to plant. So. Uh, it is not the obligation of MIRA to leave that site in pristine condition, it's the obligation of MIRA to close their operations and. Basically make sure the site meets certain standards and that's it. If, if MIRA dissolves. They're gonna have about forty million dollars in, in reserves by the end of twenty twenty-three. Ironically. MIRA has had great success over the last two years, it's crazy, but energy prices have spiked. So they're making a lot more money right now. And because they're not, there's been no obligation to maintain the waste energy plant, because we knew we were gonna start closing it down. That's like a six, seven million dollar major maintenance cost, every year, an operational budget that got removed. So MIRA, and with the high energy prices, MIRA made a ton of money over the last year or two. And as a result, they're gonna have like a record amount of reserves. So I raised the question last week at the finance subcommittee meeting that I sit on. Should those reserves go to the current MIRA towns or all the former MIRA, I mean, there were fifty, now there's twenty, you know, so that question's gonna come up. The city of Hartford's pushing back, city of Hartford obviously has more pull in the legislature, blah, 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 so, we'll see what happens with MIRA. What I would like to see, this is ultimately what I would like to see. Is whatever towns are going to Essex, that they come out of MIRA next year for the twenty-four budget. That MIRA for twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven, that's when our contract with MIRA technically ends. That we get some subsidy for those four years, until we figure out a better way, I think we're entitled to it. I signed on for MIRA, or the town signed on for MIRA, we are entitled to what MIRA has done traditionally. So I think some of that surplus, who holds it? I don't know. The Hartford and some of the other towns are saying, this is what they're saying, yes, MIRA used to subsidize. And let's say MIRA used to subsidize ten million dollars, let's say for all the towns, ten million dollars. Now they're only subsidizing five million, but they have twenty-five percent of the tonnage remaining, because all the big towns have left. So the argument is. The cost of supplement per tonnage has skyrocketed, because there's so much less tonnage that MIRA is subsidizing. But it's expensive to subsidize it, because garbage has gone through the roof, so, they're arguing, it's absurd, the amount of. they're arguing it's absurd, the amount of subsidy that is going to the remaining towns. Mira no longer should exist. Let those towns go figure it out. That's what, there's a little bit of a tension going on at the Board of Directors. I don't know how much of that is going to come out publicly tomorrow. I think it's going to be a very public meeting. So it's going to be interesting. Any of that, go ahead.
Yeah, so is the within the conversation with the Cog, is that just looking at an RFP for like the lower county? Something, are we going to think about something like SCARA, like developing our own regional kind of like waste?
That's always on the table. If it can be done, it's all about citing, if it's something like that, as you can imagine. The idea, at least for now, is to call Mark and see how we sever those services that are currently Mira sponsored to become just these towns. Because if Mira goes out of business, I would like to at least preserve the all the work that they did to at least get us where we're supposed to be. We can lock in, look, I just want to make sure the garbage is going to go away. That's my concern at this point. And uh what developments may occur over the next five years, garbage related, who can take what, uh whether there's more organics recycling, I don't know. Um but to answer your question, the idea for Thursday is probably to involve Mark Daly to see how we sever this part of the contract so that we still have. Grants. Okay, so we're applying, we uh the Steve Steve Grant opened yesterday, uh applications. Uh the application that I'm proposing that we put in is to do sidewalks from the Westbrook that Eric talked about this, from the Westbrook border to connect to where they are at Spencer Plain Road and Route One. We met with the CEO of Vista. She was excellent. She is a brilliant lady, runs a hell of an organization. And I said, we could use your help with letters of support. We have twenty. It didn't take her long to generate twenty. A lot of the residents over there, they have about fifty residents. Um when I shop at Big White, I know some of the folks from Vista are there. Uh how they get there, whether it's cycling, walking, sidewalks would be critical to them. We have Westbrook also working on their end of it, okay? So the idea is to start working west to east. Applying for a half a million dollar Steve Grant to get those sidewalks to connect, and then we can move from there towards Dairy Queen. That's the idea. And that would be, we have um a potential development going in at Benny's Plaza. I think there's a big rumor going around town right now. I have people coming up to me, hey, I heard. I'm like, hold your horses, it's got to go through zoning. But my guess is that twenty-three, you're going to see construction over at the Benny's Plaza. So it'll increase the amount of employment opportunities, so I think if we were to get a half a million dollar grant, it would get us beyond Spencer Plain Road, working further east. With surplus funds, uh so right now, Lee is projecting over a million dollars on the revenue side. The expenditure side, like dead even, it's close. So we'll see where that goes. I'll have a memo, a recommended memo, that uh you'll see next Tuesday at the Board of Finance.
To deal to for distribution of the service.
Obviously maintaining the rainy day fund, number one, right? Because once we do that, we have extra funds. I am going to recommend that we move from, you know, the Board of Finance where they agree or disagree, moving from the debt reserve to the pension reserve. Uh given that I don't think we need a debt reserve fund to pay um deficit reserve, uh what do we call it?
I thought it was for the heart hypertension.
No, a debt, it's a it it's, what we were concerned about was if we had to bond. But now we have a million dollars coming off, so I don't think, I'm not proposing we keep that and we move it over to the pension reserve. That's up for discussion. Chris Costa came to me and said, why don't we put some money aside for engineering for to get shovel ready projects? Interesting idea. It's like, that's a great idea. So I'm going to recommend that we put fifty thousand aside for projects that we don't know about, that we might come up with to take up.
Grant opportunities.
Yeah, grant opportunities. So I'm going to recommend that. I talked to Bruce Carlson about funding for a consultant for municipal development cons- plan consultant for Mira's way. I don't know that all that will happen soon enough for this. I said, Bruce, it sounds great. I mean, it sounds like a wonderful idea. I said, but we can fund that through capital not recurring too, if we have to at some point. So maybe, maybe not for for that. Uh sidewalks, I'd like to put more money into sidewalks. I'm recommending two fifty. Um I'm recommending that we do eight out of the ten or seven out of the ten of the park and rec ideas. Yep.
A lot of us were small amounts, relatively small amounts of funding.
It's like a hundred and forty thousand in funding. I agree with you. Yeah, so so those are, that was a, they had a collaborative effort through the the survey they sent down, which people responded to when they got there. Yeah, so I I think, you know, upgrading the bathrooms at both Harvey's Beach and Town Beach makes sense.
That's Korean. Yeah, that's good economic.
Bringing these flashlights up to code makes sense. And then the rest of it is, okay, you know, solar charging for phones at at our at our parks and beaches. You know, one Board of Finance member said, is that our obligation? No, it's not our obligation. It's an amenity. That's, people will say, wow, that's really awesome. That's a good thing for, you know, when people, so I I love some of the ideas. I thought they were really good. So we're going to recommend it. And I'm I'm going to put that before the Board of Finance. Obviously, this board will um have to vet those too. Those were some of the ideas we're battling around. Um but that's what we're looking at for um surplus, but Steve Steve Grant uh Community Challenge Grant, I know you have had a lot of input on this, and thank you for meeting with Jennifer on that. Not ready. So we met with one property owner. We'd like to meet with another property owner on this to come up with an idea. Okay, I I don't mean to be but uh i- if there's more to share publicly, I'll do that.
Could some of that surplus money potentially be part of the match for community challenge, just to position it differently? So it's not just us putting ARPA down, but it's us putting some town dollars and ARPA in terms of the match piece?
So yes, I think there there will be dollars for a match, even if it's capital round recurring. Because we're putting you know, look, there's, I'm not saying these are the only projects we're going to have, but we should have money there to be able to do that, whether it's a quarter of a million or something like that.
Because I think that was some of the feedback with the last community challenge was our our amount of money is the town was low compared to what we were requesting.
All right, we we can probably um find the source for that. The other project that might be coming down the pike is not only fire department, but just a community, a radio refresh.
The the presentation that they made like two or three months ago to the Board of Finance about
Yeah, but that was fire department. This is going to be policing and fire. Because, so the chief is going to meet with Motorola and see what kind of a refresh they can do without like tearing up everything. Hopefully not needing new everything. It's fifteen years old. A lot is out of service. It's true. So we're going to see where that goes.
Wasn't that close to like three quarters of a million?
Uh it would probably be all of that to do it community-wide, all of that. So we'll sit. Let's let's just put that on the back burner for now. Um I don't want to, I don't know what the numbers are. That's why I don't, I really don't. The chief is going to be, he, I met with him last week. He's going to talk to Motorola about what they can do. That's, those are my uh comments. So, you know, we're looking at all the grant stuff. Update on Beaver Dam Culver, chief is all over it. He's hoping to get seventy-five and ninety percent reimbursement on that, which that's like a one and a half million dollar project at this point, so that's a lot of money. I know he's working hard on it and appreciate that. Um all right, I'm going to move on unless there's more questions.
So what happens with short meetings?
Well, it'll be about an hour. Can someone put up those, can you put up the policy?
Um Scott, can can you pull up the, can you share your screen? Are you still on it or are you closed out?
I can get back at it.
All right, take your time. So uh minutes before the board's selectmen from June twenty-eighth, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Second, were there any um did I catch everything? Were there any amendments or anything?
I didn't see anything that needs to be changed.
All right, uh all those in favor, you can have a say. Scott, we can take a minute to let you, we're going to
I could try from
On item A, I'm going to make a motion to the table. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, all right. All right. Take your time.
Well, I need to be Sure, there it goes.
All right.
So you should be able to share.
So what I want to do is someone, if I share it, then I'm going to start.
Yeah, share and then go to the go to the town.
By the way, Scott, Mike Musco from Musco, Mike Mahoney from Musco Lighting is going to be at the field today.
Okay.
So go to
Where's the commission department?
Uh Selectman's Office, yeah. So while Scott's doing this, Carl, I'll say, before you got here this morning, I was talking to Larry about how difficult it is to actually get to policies. Because they're they are posted. I couldn't find them myself when I was looking for them this week, but they're under Town Employee Information. And some of them are not town employee focused. They should be public facing. So we we talked about trying to find a way to reposition them so that it's easier for them to be found by people that are
So it makes sense if if you just go back one, right?
They could just be
This is under
Policies is buried under Town Employee Information, but if you move it out.
And put it on on the left over here.
Instead of under Town Employee.
Because now I have to click on this.
That's, yeah.
And then we click on this. Now we're at the policies.
Okay, it should be somewhere else.
Yeah.
Because there are policies of the town.
Yeah, so they could go under forms and documents or file, let's say, where they
So um
You know, you want to see each policy or?
Uh go to the um, so, all right, so let me just tell you what I've done. Rose Kaler is a firm that Karma uses a lot. Robin Kaler uh two, three years ago went through our entire employee handbook and updated it, and that's when we came up, I don't know if you've seen that, Matt, we have not only the employee handbook, but for supervisors, we have a supervisor's handbook. And so if an employee comes to a supervisor and says, I feel I have an unsafe working condition. Supervisor can go to that policy and say, this is what I should do. It was great. She did a great job. It was a year where we didn't have to pay legal fees on labor contracts. So uh we we got that done. It was really, really well done. They have a lawyer in their office named Melinda Powell. Um Melinda was on vacation. She got back to me yesterday and missed her call. I just called her before this meeting. She said, there are tweaks. I said, good, so we can pass them. She goes, yes. One thing I would add is under the anti-discrimination policy.
So the eighty, no.
Does that equal work?
And commits to it for fair housing within, fair housing.
Fair housing.
Fair housing. Could you blow that up? Okay. Okay, so would she rec, no, no, go up.
Okay.
Yeah. Carry out an affirmative marketing program to attract prospective buyers. I don't know how to do that. Or tenants of all majority or minor, without consideration for base cost. And all and I think she wants us to add there and commits to affirmatively and commits to affirmatively further fair housing within the town. Does that make sense?
At the beginning or at the end?
At the end.
At the end.
Okay. So I will add with that amendment, okay? And with that amendment, I'd like to make this a motion to pass fair housing policy.
I'll second that.
You agree with that? Comment this, isn't it good? We delayed it two weeks?
It's okay. It's all good. It's all good.
Sounds good.
All right, uh so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, stick your five by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, go to the ADA policy.
Which one do you want?
Uh no, ADA, uh Individuals with Disabilities Act. How long is this?
One page.
Could you go to expand it and go to the first paragraph, obviously? Um and at the end of this, comma, after practices, and will provide reasonable accommodation to employees with a disability uh as provided under the law, you know, that, okay, so that employees as required by the law. Because you only are required to do reasonable accommodation, not make every accommodation possible. Okay, so those were the two main tweaks she had. So with that, I'll move to pass the ADA notice.
You know, second there, okay.
All those in favor, so you can probably say aye.
Aye.
All right, so go back. Okay, so actually, we did fair housing. And we did the ADA notice. So I, first of all, are there any other comments on any of the other policies? And if there aren't, I'm just going to move them as a group.
No comment.
Okay, the only other comment is Larry moving these things to be visible.
Did, what did he say about?
He was, he was working on it until the meeting started. So I think that if you just follow up, he he knows, he gets it.
Why don't you follow?
I think some encouragement might be necessary.
With Larry? Okay.
It it seemed that um
He didn't know where to
It seemed, it seemed quite simple to us and and uh and there was a lot of, there was a lot of deliberation about where it might go better and what the best spot was.
So I'll move that we pass the uh actually, there's a fair housing resolution, um equal opportunity statement, municipal grievance procedure, affirmative action policy. municipal grievance procedure and burden of action policy statement. As drafted, uh, given that, um, there may be minor tweaks that we can ratify in another meeting as, as they come in from the interim, okay? Um, and I'll get those for the next meeting, but I want to get these posted. So I'll move these, uh, the remaining policies, is there a second?
Second.
Then by Scott, for the comment, turn on all those in favor, signature by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, um, that is it. I kind of rambled on for a while, but, um, I may go over to the field today to check out the light, Scott. Are you going over?
I'll be over there after my lesson.
All right. Um, so I'll move adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.